At this point, I'd like to introduce our moderator, Mr. Julius Pryor III. He is General Managing Partner of J. Pryor Group, LLC. Having been the Chief Diversity Officer in some of the most well-known organizations in the world, Julius brings a wealth of global professional experience, and he's also a wonderful speaker and a fabulous facilitator. In his professional highlights, he has served as Vice President of Coca-Cola Enterprise, Vice President of Johnson &amp; Johnson Consumer Group, Chief Diversity Strategist with Russell Corporation, and also with Tap Pharmaceuticals, which is a joint venture between Abbott Labs and Tequila. And last but certainly not least, Julius served in our U.S. Navy, rising to the rank of Captain in the Surface Warfare, as a Surface Warfare Officer. So with that, please help me welcome our moderator, Julius Pryor.
Thank you very much, Virginia. Thanks again, and as Virginia said, we want to be sure that we stay on track, on schedule. So I have a number of questions that I want to ask our two candidates here. I want to be sure that we get through those questions on time. They're very to the point. We should be able to get some good dialogue from our two people onstage with us tonight, and we really want to get an opportunity to allow you all to ask some questions as an audience. So we have a very good group of people attending. We want to be sure that we stay on track and on schedule. And the other thing is, everybody thought that the presidential debate was going to be the big event, but actually, we've got, we're going to have a pretty good, a pretty good dialogue here tonight. So we want to keep it civil. We want to be sure that we're able to come together and get some things answered. I just want to say one other thing. Virginia has just been super with the work that she's been doing with the Chamber of Commerce, and I think that the dialogues and the conversations we've been able to have have just been fantastic. In fact, it's not often that we get to come together as a community to have this kind of discussion, this kind of dialogue. So I think that this is going to be productive, and I think we should really all be grateful to the people who are sponsoring this. And in fact, I want to thank Virginia and the Chamber ahead of time. Well, let me very quickly briefly introduce Dr. Mary Kay Bakayao and Teri Smith. Just a few words about Teri. She's a resident of Fayette County since 1979, married to Chip Smith. Is Chip here tonight? Okay.
He's putting out signs.
Okay. Three children, ages 17 to 23, a daughter who's a graduate of UGA, another daughter who's a student at Kennesaw, and a son who's a senior at Whitewater High. That's very good. I have two sons. I don't know what I do with daughters. I could barely manage two sons. Member of the Fayette County School Board since 2001, served as Chair-elect by fellow members from 2003 to 2010. So, Teri, thank you very much for being here tonight, and we'll get to our questions in just a second. Dr. Mary Kay Bakayao earned her Doctorate in Education Leadership at Florida Atlantic University in 1996, 24 years of teaching experience, nine years in K-12, 15 years in math, science, technology, full professor of education, and NCAT-accredited at an NCATE-accredited university. She's certified in the state of Georgia Educational Leadership, including the School of Law, Finance, and School Administration. She was given the Little Red Schoolhouse Award for Innovative Programs. And Mary Kay has four children, ages 12 to 19, and your husband's name is?
Aldo.
Aldo, and Aldo is here tonight, right? Raise your hand. Yeah, we all have to support our wives, so we want to be sure that you're recognized. All right, let's, um, let's jump right into our first question, and the first question is related to the 21st century classroom. And I'll, I'll direct the first question to, to Mary Kay, and then as we continue to go through, I'll be sure that we, that we have a good balance between how the answers are. Mary Kay, what's the most critical, what do you consider the most critical elements of a 21st century classroom? I'm specifically talking about technologies, teacher skills, distance learning, et cetera.
Well, Julius, we need to prepare our students to live in a world that's filled with technology. Technology should be used to make teaching and learning more efficient and more effective. The Internet could be a source of real-world data for math, for primary source documents, for social studies, for online collaboration for literacy, or even virtual science experiments. Computers could also be used to store digital student portfolios and work projects, such as digital stories or documentaries. I support interactive teacher and student presentation tools and electronic response systems for assessment to guide and instruction. I would like our teachers and our students to be on the cutting edge creatively producing new educational applications of technology, and not just merely passively consuming technologies that have been designed by others. If elected, I will vote for policies on the Fayette County School Board that advance the effective and efficient use of technology for increased thinking and learning.
Very good. Teri, same question. Most critical elements of a 21st century classroom: technologies, teacher skills, distance learning.
Well, to address the first thing you, the first topic of technology, I would say is we have to keep up with the current technology. We've done a good job equipping our classrooms, but you know that there are things being invented right now that we haven't even thought of, that our children are going to use, so we're going to have to not fall behind on our adoption of the most current technology. And I think the, the second most important thing, once we have the technology in place in the classroom, is teacher training, because I know it's difficult with teachers and the burdens they have, and the lesson planning and everything that they have to do and keep up with. The technology tools should make it easier for the teachers to be more efficient, communicate with students and parents and everything, but they have to have training on how to use that equipment and what, and how to keep all that stuff going. And I think it's intimidating for those of us who started out in a green magnetic chalkboard with chalk environment to keep up with all that and doing everything else that we have to do. And I think that in Fayette County, with our Bring Your Own Technology program, we have advanced that quite a bit by allowing the students to bring what they have to use in the classroom, so that the students don't have to wait for the equipment in the classroom to catch up to what they already have, because what we're finding is the students have faster, more efficient equipment at their disposal than we could possibly keep up with in the classroom. And so to allow them to do that and use that and manage that is extremely important.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about workforce preparation. Where do you stand on the college and career academy concept and why? Mary Kay?
Actually, I'm...
Oh, that's right. Go ahead. Teri? Where do you stand on the college and career academy concept and why?
I very much support the college and career academy concept. When I was first elected to the board in 2000 and took my seat in 2001, the administrators in the system at that time had done a great deal of background work in an attempt to replicate what the CEC, the Cowida Center, had, and for a variety of reasons, it never really gained traction in Fayette County, and I was disappointed that we didn't, weren't able to make any progress on that at that time. So I'm extremely enthusiastic that it has come back before the board, from the community, from the business community, from workforce preparation, to encourage the school system to get back on track and provide those opportunities to Fayette County students that so many of the students around the state are already able to take advantage of. I think, I have to check my numbers, but I think there are 28 such centers around the state already, and, or somewhere thereabouts. And I think that Fayette County students should certainly have those same opportunities.
Thank you. Mary Kay?
As a, as a part of preparing tomorrow's Teachers to Use Technology grant that I wrote and ran through the U.S. Department of Education for three years, we had a partner called the Futures Channel. And if you look it up online, it's thefutureschannel.com, and what they have is they have little videos about college and career choices that go along with all the lessons for math and for science. So that's one resource that I would like to incorporate into our schools, because what they're learning in the classroom needs to be applicable to the real world, so we need to get them ready for college and careers. I've had a chance to visit the CEC in Newnan, because at Mercy University, we teach classes at that center, so I've actually taught a class at that center, talked with some people there. My priority is going to be right now, we, we were number one in SAT scores, and now we're number four, so I believe SAT scores are our bread and butter, and I would like to get back to where we were as number one. Cherokee is now number one, and we have Fulton and Forsyth ahead of us. So before looking at creating any, any new academies, I would use the existing structure to continuously improve our offerings.
Let's talk a little bit about school board governance and ethics. Please describe what you think good school board governance looks like in action, and if you have any reference sources, let me know what those are. Go ahead.
Okay. I have a chart here that shows the roles and responsibilities of the school district's leadership team, and here we have the school board, and here we have the superintendent according to this, this handout. And the school board is authorized by the citizens, because that's their source of authority. So my authority, my source of authority would be the citizens. The board, the source of authority, the superintendent gets his authority, or her authority, from the board. The end result is up to the school board, but the means to achieve those results are up to the superintendent. The school board adopts the policies, and the superintendent implements those policies and creates rules. The responsibilities are shared. The school board has a responsibility for the beliefs, the vision, the mission, the goals, the standards, and advocacy, and the responsibilities of the superintendent are the strategies, objectives, assessment, evaluation, and accountability, as well as advocacy. So those are the responsibilities. The school board approves the accountability system, and the superintendent implements that accountability system. Now, down here, when we get to budget, the school board would approve and monitor the budget, and I think that's where my expertise really comes in, and really being able to speak the language of math and understand numbers, and to see where all the money is being allocated, and where we can do better with that. The superintendent also implements and monitors the budget.
Teri?
I actually have quite a bit of experience in the area of school board governance in studying that. When I was elected Chair to the Fayette County School Board, one of the things that I noticed that Fayette County had not participated in before is the Georgia School Boards Association Recognition Program, where you go through a series of activities where you verify that your board is actually in compliance with the standards that are set out by the Georgia School Boards Association for Governance and Leadership in that area, and then also led the board to our achievement of a Board of Distinction. Since that time, I was appointed to the Georgia School Boards Association Board of Directors and have been active in several committees, and actually spent several days with school board members from around the state, developing a new standards recognition program for GSBA that's aligned with the new state law that was resolved, if you don't know, of Senate Bill 84 that was passed a few years ago, which created another level of oversight for school boards through the State Board of Education and the governor, because of problems that school boards around the state were having. And so all of that has been realigned into a new standards recognition program, and I actually served as a member of that committee to help create that. So I really couldn't in two minutes sum up the information about school board governance, except to say, uh-oh, the hand is up, sorry.
The hand is 30 seconds.
Okay. To say that it's really most important for school board members to realize the difference in their role as a school board member and that of an administrator or a superintendent in the district, and to make that clear to the citizens.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's continue with this discussion of school board governance and ethics. What do you see as the role and responsibilities of individual board members, and what are their roles and responsibilities of the board as a whole?
As an individual board member, you have a responsibility, I believe, to advocate for public education in the community, to build support for your school system, to advocate on legislative and policy issues with the state and federal government on what it is that our schools need, but an individual board member has no authority in any way in the school system, except for as a member of that, that five-member board. And so there is no setting policy, there is no pressuring the superintendent to, to do what it is you think he should do outside of that group of five meeting in public, in a called, advertised meeting, where you go and would make decisions that are in the best interest of the school system as a member of that group. And then I think it is extremely important for an individual school board member to support and move forward with whatever the decision of the majority of the board is, and, and make that work.
Very good. Thank you. Mary Kay?
I believe it's number one to represent the citizens that elected that person, and as a school board member, it's important for me to be able to talk with the other school board members and get along with the other school board members, so that we could work together for the best interest of all of our, all of our students. And so being, having been on a SACS visiting team, the SACS accreditation visiting team, also a member of a content review panel for the Georgia PSC, and going through the whole process of going from a non-NKAC-accredited teacher education institution to an accredited teacher education institution, writing reports for the State Department on our programs at the college level, I know for sure, along with my certification in educational leadership and having passed all of those tests in that area, that I will abide by all the correct policies that are in place. And I currently do that. For example, I have kids in school here in Fayette County, and when I would go to their open house and meet with their teachers, some people would come up to me and say, "Oh, congratulations about the school board," and I would say, "Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't talk about that now, because, you know, it's, it's against the school board policy to campaign on the, on the school grounds." So I will follow whatever decisions are made by the board. I will be accountable to follow those as well.
Very good. Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about the relationship between the board and the superintendent. What do you think is the appropriate relationship between the board and the superintendent? Mary Kay?
Well, the appropriate relationship is that we would be elected to choose the superintendent, the five of us on the board would choose the superintendent based on the input of the citizens and what, what they were looking for in our own knowledge and expertise, what would be best for our county, and beyond that, we would, we would supervise in terms of making sure that the budget and all the rules and regulations, according to the SACS guidelines, according to the guidelines of our state, would be followed. So that, that accountability is really important, and I think that that's the role. It's not to micromanage and tell the superintendent to do this one particular thing, or that one particular thing, or to go into a school and say, "Do this." That's totally off limits. It would be totally inappropriate. We would work together with the superintendent for the best interest of all our kids.
Very good. Thank you. Teri?
One of the things that I find interesting in the literature that I read about school board governance is, is often referred to as the Governance Leadership Team, and the leadership is up to the superintendent and staff, and the governance is up to the board. And how the board implements that governance is by selecting the superintendent, but then, from that point on, working with that superintendent as a team. They, they set goals together, they set strategic priorities together and plan for how to implement those goals, and then state law actually requires that the board evaluate the superintendent on those established goals annually. So if the board perceives an area that needs more attention by the superintendent, then that should be established as a part of the continuous improvement process through formative and summative assessments, where the board and the superintendent together decide what the school system needs to move forward, or what the superintendent might need in regard to performance, and then have time to address those concerns that are based on the wishes of the majority of the board.
Let's continue with this, with this dialogue on, on the board and superintendent. If you're different in philosophy with the superintendent on an issue, how would you handle that?
It depends greatly on what the philosophical difference is. I think that you would have to discuss that, that you would have to discuss that with the board, and in a way that you aren't stepping outside your role as an individual board member, and making sure that what you're doing is, expresses the wishes of the majority of the board. And so that would be the kind of thing that you would need to address in the superintendent's evaluation, or strategic planning, or retreat, that you would see that this, there, there may be this difference of philosophy on something, but I also, on some issue, but I also think that it's a very important part of the superintendent's selection process, because it is the board's job to hire the superintendent, that you should know what your superintendent's philosophy is before you hire him, and then expect him to, or her, as the case may be. We've, we've had hims all the time I've been on the board. You select a superintendent that is aligned with your philosophy, and then you support that superintendent, and if it's not, you address that through the evaluation process, and then perhaps you might have to hire a different one.
Mary Kay?
I believe the board should come to a consensus. I don't think one individual board member can act alone. I don't think one individual board member should act alone. That's the reason why we have five board members, so we do need to work together in, in directing, you know, the direction of our school system. And because of that, I truly believe it would be in our best interest as a county to continue allowing all of our citizens to vote for all of our board members, so that that would more greatly facilitate the board working together for the betterment of our county.
Very good. Thank you. Let's talk about school performance and metrics for, for just a few minutes. I do want to, wanted to thank both of you for staying on track, being sure that you're answering your questions within the allotted timeframe, and we're doing very well on schedule here. School performance and metrics. The Fayette County Public Schools have an excellent reputation based on demonstrated success using metrics such as test scores, student achievement, graduation rates, et cetera. Looking forward, what specific metrics do you think are the most important indicators for the board to use to gauge success at schools individually, and for the school system as a whole? Mary Kay?
I, you know, we, we had No Child Left Behind, we had adequate yearly progress, and we've had that testing, and I've noticed that we, we used to break it out into meets, exceeds, and now it's all sort of lumped together. So having that, you know, separated out would help us to see more where everybody lies, but that, that would be the bare minimum, because we, here in Fayette County, we want our students to, to be, achieve higher than just AYP. We all, all our schools meet AYP, and we need to challenge them more, so we need to get into more higher-level thinking, problem-solving, those 21st century skills that are needed in the workplace. It's not just about the test. If it's just about the test, then we've already reached that. But I am looking at our SAT scores, and I'm saying, wow, we used to be number one, and now we're number four. That's going to affect our kids' entrance into college, that's going to affect a lot of things, it's going to affect our, our community. So looking at how we can make sure that the teachers have the tools that they need to be successful with our kids, and not be upset about different things that are going on at the board level.
Good. Thank you. Teri?
I want to thank you for that question, first of all, because it's a very interesting, I think that our, the move for No Child Left Behind, and AYP, and so many of the tests that are administered to the students are really originated in teacher accountability, to force the teachers to teach the curriculum, or the Georgia Performance Standards, or whatever, and so they were looking at, at test scores as a way to compare teachers and schools and school districts to each other. And what I would much prefer to see, and what I think would benefit students a great deal more, is if our testing, our analysis of testing was based on the growth, a growth model of improvement for individual students, teachers, or schools, to say, "This child has grown this much in whatever it is that is being measured," and to track that kind of data on the children from year to year, or even throughout a year, instead of trying to deal with averages, because when you're dealing with averages, you're dealing with so many variables that, over which the schools and teachers don't have any control. There, you know, we, we all know how many factors go into student success, and I think that what we should be looking at is a growth model for each individual child on the skills that, the, the standards that we want them to accomplish, and really pay far less attention to test scores as a way to sort students, rank students, rank school systems. It really doesn't matter to me as much that we're first in the state, although I would very much like for us to be first, and if we're falling from first, I would want to see why we're doing that, but I think our concern should be much more focused on student growth.
Okay, let's talk about another very critical concern here within the, the school system, and that's finances, budget versus educational quality. Budgets continue to be cut for education at multiple levels of government. We're in a time of austerity. We're, we're really trying to, in fact, we're always concerned about budgets and constraints on one's budget. What specific process or steps do you endorse for the Board of Education to use when addressing the budget issue to make sure a sufficient level of staffing exists to provide students with a quality education? Go ahead, Teri.
Wow, that question went a long way. You want to talk about staffing levels, or just general budget cutting?
Well, let's talk about staffing, first of all. How does, how does the budget and the budget issues make sure a sufficient level of staffing exists to provide students with a quality education?
One of the things that we start with, and, or the thing that we start with in our budget process is student allotments and teacher allotments, and most of the attention is paid to whatever ratio it is that we are either required to keep by the state with regard to student-teacher ratio, and then Fayette County's wishes to stay below that number. We have consistently made it a goal not to go to the state maximum in terms of class sizes, because, you know, we feel like obviously the fewer students, the more teacher attention you can get. I know there've been studies that show recently that that's not necessarily always true, but that's been the philosophy in Fayette County for the longest time. So keeping class sizes as low as possible has been a goal of ours all the time, but we also understand that we are working with what the state allot, and how many teachers that we can hire to fill those positions, to staff those grades, so...
Mary Kay?
My number one issue, and I, I believe it's backed up by research, is teacher quality. Excellent teacher can make a huge difference in the lives of the students. So we need to make sure that we keep our, our best teachers. We don't want to pay them less than the metro Atlanta average, because if we do, frankly, we're going to lose the best ones. If elected, I would ensure that an Excel spreadsheet of every item spent in the budget was made public. Remember, numbers are my, uh, numbers are my language. I will join with others on the board and support zero-based budgeting. That's building it from the ground up, not looking at what has been done in the past, but looking at it in a whole new light, and making sure that all the expenditures go to support that teacher in that classroom, because that teacher is what makes the difference for our kids.
Okay. What's your position on the renewal of the current East Blast, which will be on the ballot this November? this November? And if opposed to Eastblast, how would technology, buses, textbooks, and the school renovations that are in the current Eastblast be paid for in the future?
Is it my turn to start?
Yes, go ahead.
Our property tax will increase if Eastblast fails. The school board will request a school bond millage rate sufficient to cover the bond payments. Without Eastblast funds, that millage rate will be higher in the future. Another reason to like Eastblast is people cross county lines to shop at Walmart and at the pavilion. These shoppers are helping to fund our schools. We will return the favor when we cross over into their county. All but a few counties in Georgia have the Eastblast. It would be great if we all voted to renew the Eastblast this November, because we would have, we would be able to stop talking about it, and stop putting energy into trying to get it to pass. No Eastblast probably means fewer teachers. If Eastblast fails, and about 10 million of expenses currently covered by Eastblast will have to come back to the operating budget. About 90% of the current budget is people, and if textbooks, building maintenance, and all of that comes back into the operating budget, then more hard choices will have to be made. I'm voting yes on Eastblast. I will pay a little less property tax. We collect money from out-of-county shoppers, and we have some relief in the operating budget, so that we can perhaps retain more of our excellent teachers and employees.
Thank you. Terry?
I also support the renewal of the Eastblast. With regard to millage rate, we are at the maximum that we can levy on the taxpayers on the M&amp;O side. We do have a bond millage rate that could cover the debt service, and what we have done, used Eastblast payments, about a third, I think, of our Eastblast receipts have been used to retire debt. So, that's saving us, in the long run, on our bond millage and our property tax rates. If it weren't renewed, we wouldn't be making accelerated payments on those, and so we wouldn't be enjoying the reduction to our property tax rates as rapidly as we have been. But Dr. Bakayi was exactly correct. If the Eastblast doesn't pass, the other items, like technology, transportation, textbooks, if we are still using textbooks by the end of the next Eastblast, that remains to be seen, I think we probably will be using some, are going to put a lot more pressure on the maintenance and operations budget dollars, and we will be making choices with regards to class sizes and other things that we offer our students and our teachers, instead of replacing the transportation fleet at a better rate, or all those things. We'll be making more sacrifice, we'll have to be making sacrifices somewhere in the budget, because we are at the maximum millage rate.
All right, thank you. Terry, this next question is, you're going to take it to begin with, and this is about the superintendent search, and searching for our next superintendent. What do you think are the three most important qualifications which we should be looking at when hiring the next superintendent?
I think our superintendent needs to be a leader, I think our superintendent needs to be a consensus builder. One of the things that I have been greatly impressed with, with our current superintendent, was his ability to come in from outside the community and build so much support for education and for our schools in such a short period of time, to bring in the business groups, community groups, parent groups, and get everybody on board with his vision in a very short period of time. I don't know if people who haven't been paying close attention realize, because our previous superintendent had been a member of the community for over 30 years, he had been building that support and respect over that time. And so, I hope that whoever our new superintendent is will be able to possess that skill and replicate that kind of support for the schools in the community as soon as he gets here, and to be able to bring the staff along, because I know a lot of times when leadership at the same rate, because a lot of times when the boss comes in and tells us we're going to do new things, different things, you know, our initial reaction is, "I'm already doing a great job, and I'm already working really hard." And our teachers do that, and so, sometimes it's kind of hard to get them over the hump, because they are doing such a good job, to bring them along with a vision. And so, I think that that is very important.
Mary Kay, three most important qualifications in hiring the next superintendent?
What I'll be looking for in the next superintendent is the ability to attract, retain, and honor our teachers, the ability to work with numbers, the ability to balance a budget, and be able to read the budget and see exactly where those dollars are going, and how they can best help our students and our teachers. The third thing I would look for in a superintendent is the ability to take us to the next level in terms of student achievement. I believe that we're ready for that, our community is so supportive, our parents are so wonderful, and our students want to work hard, and we need somebody who can come in and take us to that next level.
Very good, thank you. The roles that you all will be filling, one of you will be filling on the board, can sometimes be a thankless task. There are people who are going to be critical of you, there are people who are going to love you, and then there are people who are going to hate you. But why are you all passionate about this role? And I'll start with you, Mary Kay.
Well, I'm obviously passionate, because I ran four years ago, I lost, and I'm coming back again, because I really feel like these, this is my community. I chose to live here, my husband and I, we purchased a house, we have a mortgage, our kids go to school here, this is our life, and it's really important for us and for our family, for our community, to have a school system that is reaching to the next level, and is doing right by all of our students. Challenging them, not just accepting the status quo, getting them to think for themselves, getting them ready for college and careers. I'm passionate about education. I started teaching in 1988 at North County Elementary in Miami-Dade. I've taught longer than I've been married, 23 years, taught 24 years. Teaching is my life, and I want this county to be the best.
Thank you. Terry?
I believe that my passion for working on the school board comes from my love for this community. I'm very passionate about the idea that public education, and a good, strong public education is the foundation for the economy of the community, as well as being what is best for the child. Obviously, for each child, it's very important that they get a quality education, but no matter how you choose to educate your children, you have to understand that the society as a whole benefits from a well-educated public, and I think that anything I can do to strengthen that, build that, support that, advocate for that, is what's best, not only for my personal children, but for Fayette County, which is my home. My parents grew up, were both born in Atlanta, grew up in East Point, moved us to Clayton County, moved us to Fayette County when I was a teenager. So, this is where my home is, this is where I grew up. This is the community I've watched grow into something very nice, and I want it to stay this way. And the last thing I want to see is this community that I call home, and have called home for my entire adult life, in a period of decay. And so, I just feel like education is the foundation for everything else that I want to see in our community.
All right, Terry and Mary Kay, I'm going to give you all each a couple of minutes to just say some wrap-up statements. Terry, I'll begin with you, and then we'll go to Mary Kay. Go ahead.
I would just want to say that I have done, I have experience of 12 years on the board, eight of those years I've served as chair. I believe I have done what I set out to do, which is advocate for public education, build support for public education, not just in Fayette County, but around the state. I made reference earlier to being on the Georgia School Boards Association Board of Directors, and so, I find myself spending a lot of time outside of Fayette County, and outside of the boardroom at the Fayette, at the central office in the Fayette County, working for Fayette County students, Georgia students, all of America's students, to try to get what they need in terms of education, legislation, and policy, to support growing them into productive human beings. And I would like to be re-elected to that position, because that is how I will continue that work.
Thank you. Mary Kay?
I would, I would like you to give me a chance to do this, because it's really something I'm qualified for, and I really feel that I would do a great job as a school board member. I would know what to do, what not to do. But I think my most important quality is that I, there's no one I don't want to work with, there's no one I can't work with. As a teacher, every student in your class, you just love them, you don't say, "I'm not going to work with this student or that student." I'm willing to work with all the school board members and every member of the community, because it's for our kids. So, I hope you would give me that chance.
Thank you both of you very much. I just want to thank both Mary Kay and Terry for being here tonight, for answering these questions. We're going to get to some audience questions in just a moment, but I just want to remind us again, I think that we're all very fortunate to be in a county that allows us to have this kind of discussion, and that has people like this who are passionate, capable, and qualified to hold these positions. So, I want to thank both of you again for answering these questions tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.